Debbie.
Are you a no degree?
Anybody's.
You are.
You're opposed to starting a minute early?
They don't have to.
Yes, start a minute early.
Sarah's got a sign for us, so I just get some witness.
There you are.
Okay. We're getting ready to start. We're getting ready to start.
Okay.
Good evening. Called at order now the Warwick County Commissioners Meeting for June 23rd, 2025. Please join us in the pledge.
Our first item for the Erie Plain Commission would be a request for the extension of surety. It's Castle Ridge subdivision by Castle Ridge Development by Donnie Denton, member. We're holding $64,505 for street sidewalk and drainage construction. They're requesting one year at the same amount. They've had four years and this current letter credit expires 7/23 of 25. We have had the county engineer assistant and county surveyor review the dollar amounts and they have signed off on the dollar amounts being sufficient.
Yeah, Bobby's authorized me to sign off for the county engineer.
Okay, I'm making motion to extend the surety.
I'll second the motion.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We actually have to do a roll call because.
Roll call paper. Stacy Franz?
Here.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Terry Philby?
Yes.
Sarah Seaton?
Yes.
Next item is another request for reduction of surety. High Point Villa PD Phase 1, High Point Homes LLC by Roy Paxton, member. We're holding $23,193.50 for street sidewalk and drainage construction. They're requesting a modification from the subdivision control ordinance to have a one-year extension with a reduction to $14,300. They've had this letter credit for four years. It expires 7/22 of 25. We've also had the county engineer's assistant review the dollar amount and the county surveyor and they've signed off on the dollar.
Again, Bobby Howard authorized me to sign off on his behalf.
Make a motion to approve the reduction.
Second.
First and second.
Roll call. Stacy Franz?
Yes.
Philby?
Yes.
Sarah Seaton?
Yes.
High Point Village PD Phase 2, High Point Homes LLC by Roy Paxton. We're holding $10,703 for street sidewalk and drainage. They're requesting modification to allow one more year extension and a reduction to $3,850 to cover the streets and drainage. They've had three years. This expires 7/22 of 25. And same thing with this one. County engineer's assistant and county surveyor have reviewed the dollar amounts and they say that that would be adequate to cover what's left.
Same recommendation. Bobby Howard's authorized me to sign for his behalf.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second.
Roll call. Stacy Franz?
Yes.
Terry Philby?
Yes.
Sarah Seaton?
Yes.
We have two sidewalk acknowledgements. They're both in High Point Village. First one's in Phase 1. It's High Point Lane at 547 lineal feet and High Point Court at 132 lineal feet. We're holding $9,585 for the sidewalk construction, so they're also asking to release that money. They've had four years. Expire 7/22 of 25. And the sidewalks have been inspected and signed off by the county engineer.
Bobby signed these, so self-explain.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
First and a second.
Stacy Franz?
Yes.
Terry Philby?
Yes.
Sarah Seaton?
Yes.
Our last item's High Point Village PD Phase 2. Sidewalks along High Point Court at 250 lineal feet. We're holding $1,230 for this sidewalk construction. They've had three years. Letter credit expires 7/22 of 25. And the county engineer is also inspected and signed off on the acknowledgement.
Make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
First and second.
Stacy Franz?
Yes.
Terry Philby?
Yes.
Sarah Seaton?
Yes.
And that's all I have?
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Items for discussion quarter report, report from weights and measures.
I'm just going to give you the amount of tests that I did and it's not necessarily all pieces of equipment, but some of them were retests. And did five truck scale test, 13 rail scale test, which was only one rail scale. This is an in-motion rail scale, so it has to be tested several times to approve it. Did seven computing scales, 436 fuel dispensers, of eight of which were over, two I red-tagged. They were kerosene scales, both are kerosene dispensers, both in Elberfeld area. Did 102 firewood audits, 10 portable scales, one of which I red-tagged several times. The service company had a hard time getting that, a brand-new scale to pass, but they finally did get it to pass. One fertilizer hopper, one suspension scale, and one bench scale, which I red-tagged and it's in New Bayer Plumbing and it will be red-tagged. It doesn't work. But 576 total tests is what I did in the last quarter. So I just wanted to go real quick over the annual and it would have been 2,441 tests, 297 of which were rejected. 10 were red-tagged. Three of those are still red-tagged, which are the kerosene pumps and the scale at Bayer. That's all I have.
Did you get your fuel equipment repaired or replaced?
And I have emailed them back and asked if they've sent them and they haven't responded to me whether they have sent those back or sent them.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure they weren't lost in the mail and I haven't got any response from them, so. I will stay after.
Okay, all right. Let me know if you need any help.
All right, thank you.
It's fine.
Next up, Health Department.
Hi, Julie Shade, Contract Administrator for Warwick County Health Department. We're here today to talk about the contract. Or it's not a contract, it's just a service that we're going to be using. It's in, it is in Spect Hub. And I'm going to let Tina talk to you just a bit about it, what it does. And then they'll need a couple iPads to go with that. So we do have computer money that we can use to get the iPads and then this system and then the next system that we're going to talk about. I do have many in HFI, so it would be state money that would support all that, okay? Just so you know.
Okay, so we're looking to get this Inspector Hub. It is a program that's going to house all of our inspections, but it will also include not just the food, but the pools and the body art. It'll all be in one spot. They will actually put out invoices for us. So for the bills and stuff, it'll also permit, print the permits. And this costs a lot less than the other one. It's $1,920 a year versus the last one I presented. It also allows two inspectors for that amount. And then the supervisors and the clerical are on there for free to go ahead and check and see what they need. We'll also post our inspections. So it'll take it and then it'll put it onto the website wherever we choose to put them at on that. It does allow an hours of time for us to protect work if we need help with tech stuff. And two hours of train the trainer, they'll come and train us. If it exceeds over that, they do charge a fee. It is like $140 an hour. However, they said they're leaning in on that too. So with that, we also are familiar with another county that's using this and is more willing to help us to move forward, you know, to use this, learn how to use it too if we have to ask them questions. Also, somebody's already using it already. So I think it's going to be, oh, we can also do the pictures on it too. We take a lot of pictures during inspections anymore. So it'll hold those pictures for us too with the inspections. I think it'll be a really good program for us to start using.
Now, refresh my memory. Is this what we talked about a few months ago and you were going to go out and see what else is out there?
Yes, this is one of the programs.
So this is another what was out there that you found?
Yes, this is another one. So we've looked at three, we're looking at the, we've looked at the one that we currently, well, we're not currently using, but USA Food Safety, which only does food and is kind of hard to work with. The other one, oh, I forgot the name of it. Thank you, Fetch. But it was, and it's pretty expensive, is what we found out when it came down to it. This one here is only $1,920 for the whole year to use for their user services, so.
And they're planning on making up Septic's, or.
Oh, yes, I forgot to mention that.
And Davis County's using it and they like it, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for looking and finding.
Oh, not a problem. I'm just glad you guys are concerned. The, yeah, the inspect, the Septic part of that, they're working on that, so it will be an added cost once they get it put in, so.
Say that again.
The Septic, Septic part of that, they are working on that. It's not included in this, but they're working on it. So once it's implemented, then it will be an extra cost if we choose to.
Any idea?
With that.
Any idea with that cost?
No, then do not give us an amount right now because they're still in the working process.
And then say the figure again annually?
A hundred, I'm sorry, $1,920. And that's just for two inspectors. So if we bring in a third inspector, then it does increase. And it should tell you that in your packet too, I believe.
Okay. And then do you remember how much Fetch was going to be?
Oh goodness, I don't have my notes in front of me, but it was.
Do you? Oh, that's what I know.
It was close to like 20 some thousand.
I was thinking it was like, yeah, I was thinking like 32.
Like 10 times this, huh?
Plus monthly. Yes. So this is considerably cheaper.
Yeah, I appreciate you.
Tina, does this include the two iPads or is that separate?
That would be separate. We'd have to get our own iPads and stuff for this.
Okay.
Okay, so my first question is, I thought I heard Mr. Parrish the other evening say, now I'm going to paraphrase here, that it was a catch-all, does everything at the health department. I know, that's, what did I miss?
Who's Mr. Parrish, please?
It's the next time.
Next time, as he was presenting at the health board meeting. He, I thought I heard him to say his software was kind of an all-inclusive for the health department.
This is what we would do, our inspections.
These are the mobile inspections.
Yes.
I understand what it is.
Yeah, sure.
So, please forgive me for what I'm about to say because I wasn't aware of this. You're correct, Terry.
Please state your name for that.
Daniel Parrish, William Parrish Consulting Services. Your assumption is correct. The application that we developed does do much of the same functionality. What you are doing in all fairness is a much better cost than what we have put forth on that side of the equation. What it does mean is that the estimate that's about to be before you would involve substantially less data transfer, which means my estimate is significantly high. And I'm going to have to rework that. I was, I mean, it's good because obviously the cost of accounting will be less.
So I just, that's why I wanted to clear up.
You're spot on. I was.
Do we want to buy one product or do we want to buy two? That's the question initially.
And that's a decision you'd have to make internally. I can influence that on any level.
When we discuss your proposal or estimate, can we visit what that cost would be or do you know what that cost would be?
I know what our cost to implement the system that we have developed for you is. I would need to have a better understanding of what this application, what all it's going to do and what information would not need to be ported. And of course, we wouldn't need some of the functionality of the application we've written.
But for the roughly $2,000 annually?
That's a tough price to be.
Okay.
No question about it. If I were reversing roles here, my recommendation would be, now mind you, sight unseen, I would be doing exactly what is being recommended here.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
So we'll talk about the features of your product here next, but I've got some more questions for Tina. What amount of storage does this include?
I don't have that. I don't know that part of it. It's not within the proposal part.
You don't know that if you're going to upload a bunch of pictures every day that you do an inspection.
I was going to say, I don't remember seeing anything. Nope, we can get that found out.
Okay. I believe that could affect your price. The amount of storage that's provided could potentially affect your pricing. Is this a, you're asking for iPads? This is an application or web-based?
Web-based.
Okay. And I don't see anywhere in the letter that it talks about implementation costs. What's that?
It's all that amount there is what it is. So what we would do is we give them our Excel document, our Excel that we have put together for all of our inspections. And when we do those inspections and they would enter that. As far as the data, data transfer, you know, from the past inspections, we would scan those in and put them in.
You guys are going to do that?
Yes, we will probably be the ones that will do that for the past ones then.
So you kind of answered my next question. Where does your existing data reside? It sounds like it's in a spreadsheet.
Yes, as far as our inspections go, like the dates that we did them and all that, yes, it's on this spreadsheet. The actual inspection forms are on our laptops and on, in our files, our paper files.
Okay.
And that's where the public has access to announce paper files?
If they want to come and ask for them, we can release them that way. But we do not have something set up at this moment to go just out, like social media or anything like that. This program would help if that happened because all those inspections would be housed in there and then they would send them out.
Okay.
What, what is that like, everything that's ever been done in Warwick County over time or?
It would just be like, say we go around and we do our inspections for a month, okay? There was like a 10-day grace period before you post any of those inspections, all right? So after that 10-day grace period, they would take that last month and post it, just like I used to do. We would do like one month. And then when we hit the 10th, I would pass that past month out or put that past month out. This way I'm understanding would do the same thing. We would do all the inspections on it. They would already have all that information. They'd wait until that 10 days is up and then they would proceed to send them out that way.
Send them out where?
Wherever you guys decide to put them at. If it's going to be on our county website.
Okay. So that was my, that was going to be my question. So these are like, this is a better public access to that information.
Or anything like that. This will be where you guys decide this is where you want them at.
Okay. And where are they pushed? Are they pushed out anywhere now or they just paper?
They're just paper. They're in there. If somebody needs them, they're available at the health department.
But this way they can just get online wherever we put them?
Yeah, and read them and see what, you know, what's going on.
Yeah, agreed. Okay.
Okay, so what I'm trying to figure out here is, it sounds like you're just moving forward from today forward with this. You're not going to upload historical information into this platform?
We're not.
Are you?
Well, that's what I was saying is that we're going to scan those other, the past inspections in. I mean, it's not going to happen at all at once.
Okay, so, okay, hang on, hang on.
I don't know that answer that.
We wouldn't go past the recognition on that.
That's, okay, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Then it's electronic, so that's all we would do. We won't go back to, you know what I mean? I mean, I'm just saying we're going to do.
How much time is it going to take to get all of that information organized? That's kind of what I'm trying to figure out for you.
And is it necessary to go?
Yeah.
You know, is it, is it even necessary? Maybe go back to January 1st.
We keep the paper ones in there if we wanted to and not put them back, you know, go backwards.
Yeah, and I feel like maybe if you just, if you wanted to go back to January 1st and then just put a little thing on there, records or inspections prior to January 1st, 2025 are available. At, you know, it just seems like it would be an awful lot of time for old inspections to be uploaded and a lot of space. But that's for you guys to decide.
Right.
Okay, so we've got two different things going on here that may accomplish the same goal. Julie, do you have a recommendation on which way you want to see the department go on this? Or did we throw you a fair loop?
Kind of because I've kind of been letting Tina handle and she's talked to me about it, but.
Can we hear what Mr. Parrish has to say about his product?
On the surface, without knowing much about this application that Tina's presented, on the surface, it appears that our application will do pretty much all of that. If you were making a decision based on cost alone, we would need to understand exactly what all features of the application we've written that you will be using.
So the proposal that you have in front of us today and all the health boards already asked us to approve it. As I understood, it was all-inclusive. Is that your full suite of products? Is it everything, the pricing that you have given?
It pretty much automates the function of the health department. There's the permitting, pretty much all of it. And the financial side as well. You know, to your question earlier about disk space and whatnot, it's relatively unlimited. And I can't speak for Inspector Hub, but I can tell you from 42 years of IT experience, one thing that is cheap is disk space. I can't fathom that those costs would be very much for them or us, to be perfectly honest.
That's another question I would like you to ask this vendor. Is there, is there storage redundant?
We don't.
Yeah.
And I can speak to that at least from our perspective, much like I did the other night. You know, we have full redundancy across the board, not just in terms of the system itself, but including all of the supporting systems, the network infrastructure, the data center, you name it, everything has redundancy built in to make it available. Again, some of, I don't believe that they are handling, for instance, birth and death records. And that's one of the significant differences in the application. Ours is taking that information, which is HIPAA classified data, and we handle the security around that as well, which is pushing our application to be run in an intranet versus an internet environment. In other words, it's secured. You're not going to access the system we wrote from outside of Warwick County, outside of Warwick County government. There are some, there are some differences, but there's definitely some overlap. And again, I can't speak to it. I haven't seen their application. I don't know what it does and it's not, not my place to recommend for or against. I just know that upon hearing this, it sounds like there's some duplicated functionality and that's a decision you have to make internally. But regardless of the decision you make, if you go in the direction of the Inspector Hub, then I will have to revisit what I put together for you because you simply don't need all of those features.
Me, I would like to have one system to have everything to turn out so I can have it all together. That's.
I agree.
And I'm used to using this program, so. But on hers with doing their inspections and typing it up and everything, that's not it.
Right, because that's going to be with the new state code and everything. The 7/26 that just came down, you know, that's all going to be loaded in there for us to be able to pull up and put in what we need to or do the inspections too.
So is yours, is yours more of the data storage? Or do you, do you have the ability to do the inspections on the tablet that they need to take out with them and?
We would have to add that functionality.
Okay, so that would be an additional.
That is correct. That feature is not presently available. But that goes to something, again, I wasn't aware of. If the statutes have changed and there's some governing law that says we need to make some changes in order for Gibson County to be compliant, that is something we need to talk about off-line because we need to make sure that that functionality is in there. So we're going to have to add it one way or another.
With this program, I can go in there and I can pull up how many of your certificates, how many of your certificates. I can put a date in and it gets all.
But do you, but does Gibson County use it for inspections? No?
We keep track of our permits and the numbers and everything and then we have everything in file, so no.
Okay.
But it would be better to have something to have it electronic so they have it all together too, so.
We really need to have a conversation.
We do, yeah.
And perhaps re-present.
So I think there's questions that I'd like to have answered before I'd be willing to cast a vote on.
Spect Hub?
Inspector Hub.
That's fine. We can bring this back to the next meeting. I was thinking more of hers is just doing like her inspections and keeping them together to where we send them out so people can change them and they were just.
So, so I guess my question to you is, because you're very supportive of the services he provides, are you as in your position, would it, would you be okay with the split with her having the inspect?
Yeah, because I can probably get a report from those with them. So I mean, it would, as long as I can keep it together and have a report of everything so we can keep track, basically.
Can I go off script for just a brief moment? And I'm going to speak strictly in my role as an IT professional. Regardless of which direction you go, it would be my recommendation that ultimately you get to one system. If Inspector Hub has plans and you already mentioned that there's, there's one change coming down the pike, which could be one of many, that is something worth absolutely considering. And for my part, the exact same question should be asked of us as well. That should be the long-term plan.
Because the county, we work to get away from desperate systems in areas, which helps Guy, our IT guy, with his job and not having to service a variety of products and have one place to go. Obviously, it sounds like we're paying double if we do two products. So I just don't, I don't think that's a good idea to go two different directions with one goal.
Correct me if I'm wrong, right now, as it, as it is, you don't offer the inspection part of this?
No, we have some of, some of the features, but not to the extent that they do.
Okay, so necessarily we may have to go short-term anyway with two different systems.
It's not, it's not a, not an awful idea, but I'm kind of on the same page.
Yeah, and I think it would be a goal to get to, but I don't know that we wait for you to be able to have a functionality. How long would it take for you to develop that, go back?
What we would end up doing, first, I need to take a look at what the actual legal requirement is and make sure that we adhere to that. Second, with the fact that we already have this system in place in Gibson County, Cozy County and to a limited extent Davis County, we would have to take a look at that because we wouldn't look for all the, for each county to, you know, encumber or to have to bear that burden of that total cost. We try to split that up. I simply don't have enough information to answer your question with any sincerity at this point.
That's Stacy, she got lost.
Could we estimate months? I mean, like, we're talking months down the line. I'm just wondering if like a six-month would give you the, the access that you need and you the time that you need that maybe we could come back to the table.
Given the development projects we have on the books at present, and when those are scheduled to begin versus what is wrapping up presently, if we were to put our resources on this, we could probably map this out. Certainly no more than two months.
Is there a month-to-month option here?
Actually, there is, with this one, it will break it down. So I don't know if it says in this packet, but in the emails I've had...
This is 115 a month for?
Yes, when you get on their website, you can see where it shows you, you can go by month on that too.
It's just 115.
Yeah, 115 per month.
But we need to compare apples to apples too and figure it out, so. I was thinking she's using for the inspections. I didn't realize the payment and all that stuff whenever he's doing all the financial part, so I was thinking it was two different things, so you can revisit it and figure out how to do that.
Because ours includes that too, and what we're doing, but we're really into trying to get this inspection program going. That's, you know, the big, that's a big thing for us, is to have that, the ability to do it electronically and to get them posted and stuff.
How do you feel though about starting with one program and three months down the line learning another one?
So, because I think that's a lot of learning one program just to switch off to a new one, so.
And I'll bear that in mind, too.
So is it, is it worth just holding off? I, I know that you want to get this started, but is it worth holding off?
Yeah, I do want to get started as soon as we possibly can, but it's better for us to wait a little bit and revisit it. Got it, because we need to learn a new program, get used to it, and then switch off. It would be more headaches. I don't wanna do that either.
Okay, all right. So we just kinda put both of these on the, on the back burner? Okay. That's what this is for, what it's about? Yeah?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
So Debbie, I don't think we need to put that on there until they tell us it's Friday before again.
Julie, next, emergency preparedness coordinator.
Let's give it one second. Look like you're like sitting on our hands, because it's so cold. And in 20 minutes, it's just gonna be burning up.
Keep you awake.
I think it feels good.
My, my warm coffee has ice layer on it now. I'm sitting on mine, I'm so cold. Okay, proceed.
All right. Dr. Kari, Health Officer for Warwick County Health Department. One of the other things we wanted to talk to you about is the position of the Emergency Preparedness Coordinator. This position has been vacant for several months, per my understanding. Currently, it's as a part-time position. And so the current Emergency Preparedness Coordinator at Gibson County is also part-time, and somebody that I do know and have worked with in other rounds of EMS and in emergency medicine. And he would be interested in also filling part-time contracted, as are Emergency Preparedness here in Warwick County, doing very similar things, obviously, that he's doing in Gibson County as well. We already have it, the money appropriated in the budgets, correct? I don't know which budgets, but it's actually grant, grant money, that we would like to proceed with getting him a contract to do part-time work as our Emergency Preparedness.
So tell me about the part-time hours there and here, what that would look like.
So he's a contractor at Gibson, correct, as well? So it would be non-employee status. It would be like an independent contractor. And he works mainly from home, is my understanding, for Gibson County, and could do same here, being separate time. I believe it's contracted at 48 hours per paid period, so 20 hours a week.
Okay. I'm naive as to what the job is, so, that he can do from home, because I'm thinking emergency preparedness isn't at home.
Yeah, so it's like disasters that happen, like, so like with the health department, any kind of mass vaccination, pause, stuff like that, he sits up and the health department had to be moved because something happened here, and he's setting us up a place, another...
So on a daily basis, what would he do?
Like, you have to have him on staff to have the money, but he, he also helps with grant stuff as well with it. And he does coordinate like with different needs and things like that. As far as daily basis, they don't have a lot to do, but they have to be there, so.
Okay.
It's a lot of overlap, honestly, with the EMA.
All right, that's what I wondered.
And partnering, partnering with them and making sure we're kind of all on the same page and working well together.
But it's separate grant money, so we need him. And is there anything in the grant that says that he has to be on-site?
Yeah, she would know too, so.
I have to look at it again, I can't say yes or no.
It's just, they have to fulfill and meet the deliverables of it, and then, so that's what we, that's what we do with him. And then any kind, we have a LE, LEPC, yes, LEPC meeting. He goes to those. He coordinates meetings with like your hospitals, your nursing homes, and things to what they would do in an emergency. So just kinda like that kind of stuff's what he does. And we do work with EMA, like we've done programs with severe weather even that he's went with that and does stuff with that. So do anything that we need to do with that, so.
Do we, any idea per week, how many hours he might actually be in person? Or is there much of the need, or is that gonna be more like he goes to meetings with EMA?
In and out, but it just depends. Like, sometimes the state will come in and they'll have a meeting, and they'll have it at the health department, or he checks in, calls me, we talk anytime that there's any kind of update on stuff. He's been right now working with, he does all the grant stuff, so any kind of invoices and things like that, he'll, he does all of that. So he takes care of that whole bit, grant.
Matt, can I ask you a question? Drag him into this.
Matt Gable, EMA Director.
So you've worked with, you've worked with the previous?
Yeah, I worked with Jake. He is now my deputy director.
You stole him, right, okay. Let's check it. So what was, what was that interaction like when Jake wasn't working for you, but he was working there? So what kind of interaction do you need with the person in that position?
So when he comes in, I first, being here is gonna be tremendous. I, I need to know who he is, work with him, take him around to the people that I know, so he gets familiarized with them. Because again, during a disaster, if he doesn't know anyone, we're not gonna be able to be on the same page. Like, when I came in, I made it known and met with every leader that we had, so I would like to have that connection.
And then after, after that period of time of introduction, would it be sufficient for him to be at home most of the time for you?
For me, yeah, but if there's a disaster in two different counties, we gotta look at that as well. That's my downfall.
You have an assistant, so we have an assistant up there, and you have one here, so Sarah fills that right now. So you have to have two people, so that wouldn't be a problem ever.
It won't be a problem. I forgot the...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Right, and Sarah, Sarah's just filling in now, but you can't use the grant money, so it's just sitting there, because she can't pay.
Understood.
Yeah, because she's paid as a public health nurse. We can't use the specific grant money.
So right now, she's, she's doing both.
She's doing both, but we're not utilizing the specific grant money because she's already being paid as a public health nurse.
So this grant is on a draw basis, so we don't have the money here. We have to turn in invoices, actually pay them out first, and then get them reimbursed.
Correct.
So this, Debbie and I have talked about this a little bit this week. It's 1099 in Gibson County. Be it 1099 here or an employee?
No, no, you end up on a contract, 99.
1099, okay. So my concern, I got concerns either way, but in that, in that aspect, you know, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit jumpy at the, at the 1099, being told they have to work 20 hours a week. Here's when you come to work. Here's when you do this. Here's when you do that.
Not doing that position.
That's what, that's what they, that's what we kinda just went through. It's, it's an expectation of 20 hours a week.
Yeah.
And it could be a Saturday. It could be, you know, whenever the, the time period you permit.
But you're still delineating then the 20 hours a week, right? Because it's an hourly...
There's no set hours on that position. It's grant money, and they're a lot at $20,000 a year.
Yeah.
So whatever they work and whatever they do, that's what they get. So that's how it is.
And so what, we would, he would then do a time card for us?
He'd sit in a contract, contractual service or whatever. That's what I do. I mean, that's what I do up there. I don't, I have them underneath, just like I'm paid. He's paid like that. The health officer's paid like that.
Hourly or salaried?
Just, they just get a lump sum each week, so they're paid for 10 days. So then we pay him that much to equal out their $20,000 a year. So, and it's already just that you're in there. They don't turn in actually.
You wanna know when that's hourly, when that happens? Is that your concern?
I don't, I don't. It's, to me, it's a contractor's a contractor's a contractor. I'm gonna pay you to build a sidewalk.
Yeah.
That's, we're gonna pay this person to do that, and so, you know, the, the discussion was a little bit about right stuff.
Meeting the needs of that.
That's how we know.
Wouldn't. That's how, that's how that position works.
Okay.
As long as that's clean and easy, that's...
So are you asking for us to approve?
Stacy's online. She have any questions?
I am, except for Debbie's sounds glitchy a little bit, but I, I've heard most of it. My concern was that the, um, just so that his hours were clear for Warwick County, as they're clear for the other county that he's working in.
There's no set hours.
Yeah, I think that's what we just clarified, Stacy. He's paid for the job, not by the hour.
Okay.
So as long as he's doing his job effectively and the administration believes so, then he's met the obligation of the contract. Is that correct?
Yes. Does someone in this position also work with Matt Gable a little bit?
Oh, you must have missed that.
Yeah, I'm just like, I, uh, the video cut off as well, so I'm just listening.
Yeah, Matt came up and explained, Matt came up and explained how the roles would interact.
And he would work with him and get familiar with everybody who needs to be in contact with him.
I believe having someone in that position would be a great addition to the health department.
And he already knows the incidence of everything, so that's a plus.
Okay.
Well, that approach has worked well so far.
And he's a pandemic, he's a policeman, firefighter.
All right, so I'm ready.
Make a motion to approve the contract. We don't have, we don't have a contract right now.
So contingent on?
Okay, going through the process, okay.
Yeah.
I will second that motion.
The, the motion would be contracted for employment of an Emergency Preparedness Coordinator for the health department.
Contingent on legal review?
Yes, contingent on legal review.
Okay. Two seconds.
Okay.
Stacy, you're second, okay. So roll call.
Roll call. Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi. Sarah Seaton.
So Julie, if you just wanna work with Erin, and you really use yours as a guide, as her as a form, and then just rough out the duties, so, thank you.
May I ask his name?
Kevin Cox.
He's curious. If I hear in the future, I know who he is. Is that it?
No.
No?
Well, she doesn't, she doesn't have, but I talked...
It's on the news.
The 2025 Health First, this year's budget, I just, I gave you guys a copy to look at, I'm, I'm gonna make it brief. I've already talked to Crystal. We've set up additionals with that here. You guys see the column where I made the changes. The one before that is where the council only gave us $801,961. We were actually appropriated $1,249,849.64. So what I did is restructure that to put it into the places that we need, and you'll see at the bottom the add-ins, which will be more operating supplies for the health department, other supplies for partnerships, and then working with partnerships to meet the state's requirements for the KPIs and core services for public health and to help Warwick County residents with that kind of stuff, so that's what we did. And then when State Board of Accounts does an audit, they're gonna see that, hey, we were given that 1.2 million. It's, it's already appropriated and we have it, and it matches the state, so. I have talked to Crystal, and I have actually wrote a letter to the council about the changes and what we're doing. Basically, we are doing a reduction change. It's coming from the salaries, positions never filled, and the benefits, the FICA and the PERF, and most of the money is from the contractual and professional services. So that's all gonna be reduced and then put into these other ones that we have put down here to help meet these needs. Okay? And I did give you guys a copy of 2026 Hope in HFI, so you guys know what we're asking for. That's it.
Thank you guys so much for your hard work.
Sorry about the whole inspection money.
No, that's what it's all about. All right, thank you. Okay. Action Agenda, first item, approval of minutes from the June 9th, 2025 meeting. That's right.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
I'll second the motion.
We heard you, Stacy Franz.
Roll call vote?
Roll call vote. Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi.
Yes.
Sarah Seaton.
Yes.
Debbie, you're up.
Okay, next, on the consent agenda. I have the payroll voucher number 12 and the amount of $708,125.82, and the accounts payable voucher of June 23rd, 2025, six, wow, this is 60, I might have put that wrong. $60,141, no, $60,141,316,086. I know, I just looked at that. I think I wrote it wrong. It's like, we didn't have that much money. I was looking at it upside down. Let's try that again. Mike's spending money. 60 thou, oh, it's settlement, that is right.
Oh, okay.
So it is $60,141,316.86. It's in your book.
Yes.
That's my two consent items.
Are those the only, okay.
Yes.
Just answer my questions. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call. Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi.
Yes.
Sarah Seaton.
Yes.
Okay, the next item, we have opened the opioid grant process, and we had four applicants, and two of those has been approved, each up to $25,000. The first is Restore Ministries, and the opioid committee has approved these two and recommended to the commissioners. The first is Restore Ministries, and they will be completing their first transitional home, and anticipates opening the doors in August. The home will serve as a sanctuary for women and their children as they begin recovery journeys together. Program focuses on spiritual growth, soul repairing, recovery, work readiness, and trauma-enforced Christian counseling, addressing the root causes, and long-term healing of the residents.
I think this will be another amazing ministry for the county, and I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and second.
Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi.
Yes.
Sarah Seaton.
Yes.
The second is Hope for Warwick County. Hope for Warwick County has received money in the past from the unrestricted funding, but they applied again for up to $25,000. And things they intend to do is place nalox boxes in more areas of the county, such as Warwick Trail, ballparks, soccer fields, public parks, libraries, and Warwick County's two courthouses and the jail. They are also going to try to do two small poster boards on Highway 62 East and Highway 62 West, and one near Castle High School on 261.
Make a motion to approve the grant.
I'll second.
Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi.
Yes.
Sarah Seaton.
Yes.
Back to this. Next item that I have is approval of pro-rehab to host the Total Joint Trek 8th Annual Meet on the sidewalks along the Warwick Wellness Trail. It's an opportunity for networking for persons with joint replacement. The walk starts at 8:00 and other festivities to follow. The Bobby Howard and the sheriff have both approved. They are willing to sign the facilities agreement, provide a COI.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi.
Yes.
Sarah Seaton.
Yes.
Next item is approval of use of the Herald Gun Pavilion by the Otter Creek Baptist Church on June 29th, from 10:00 to noon. They will be passing out school supplies. They also signed a facility agreement, provided COI. They will be passing out school supplies. They also signed a facilities agreement and have provided a COI.
I'm going to change this up.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Did she just make a motion?
Yeah.
Stacy, if, if you don't mind, I'm going to make a motion to authorize the county administrator to handle these things administratively. The Herald Gun Pavilion, the courthouse lawn, both those areas get used a lot in, in the past. That's kind of how we handled that. I don't know that that needs to come before.
I would agree. I think that's a great idea, Terry.
So, if you'd like to withdraw your motion, I'll make that motion.
Are you going to require them to enter into contracts for facility use?
There's, of course, there's a process.
Any contract has to go before the commissioners. You can streamline these and just have one agenda item for five facility contracts.
Yeah.
So we can streamline it, but, but if you're going to require them to enter a contract, we can authorize them.
I don't know what the contract could be.
It'd be the facility use agreement that's just a form, a document.
I don't think that's necessary, but if the other commissioners do, that's fine.
What part do you think is not necessary?
Just give them permission. We got a, uh, additional insurance certificate, and we're good.
And what does that do to us, liability?
Just because we're additional insured doesn't mean we're protected. I mean, this is the kind of discussion we had a couple of months ago. You know, I think there's some uses that are pretty straightforward, but others, they need to get, like, the facility use has them go through EMA, has them go through the Sheriff's Department, make sure that they have the barricade if necessary. I mean, it, that, that's why we set up that agreement. It, it covers what facilities, bathrooms-wise, they can use, that they have a requirement to clean up after themselves. I mean, all those things are not satisfied with just a COI. So it is commissioners' call, it's up to you, but I, I just think there's a lot of issues where, um, it's unclear. Then it would put a lot of burden, in my opinion, legally on, on Debbie to try to be the point of contact. Well, I, I told them this, they told me that, so just buttons those up for the, the county.
I'll second Stacy's motion.
First and seconds, um, that is on the use of the, okay. Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi.
Yes.
Sarah Seaton.
Yes.
The next two items, I'm going to ask Matt Gable to come up.
Matt Gable, the EMA Director. The first one is the ratification for the Table Rock Alerting System. That was the SHSP grant that was awarded and has been executed. It's just for them to conduct their business and place the five new warning signs. Also with that, uh, I've talked with the Warwick County Parks, uh, and they have agreed and voted on with Joe to allow us to place one at Friedman Park, and with that, we have to get permissions from the commissioners to place it on county property.
I don't have that in there. I didn't get it from, did you bring a copy of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's all right here. There's a letter too, from Friedman Park.
That's what exactly you're asking for, huh? What, what are we approving?
This is for Table Rock Alerting System.
It's for this system, not for the.
No, this is, that is the company who won the bid for the SHSP. They're the ones that installs, along with mouse, they tie it in.
You just need the agreement.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the letter above Commissioner Philippi is the letter of support from the Parks Foundation.
Because they want it there.
Yeah. They, in that letter explains.
Matt, is that the same documentation you showed me last week?
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you.
You have how many additional that are going out?
Five new signs.
Five, and this is one of them?
Well, that's the whole entire, where they can do the work. The Friedman Park, is I just need a, a yes to place on county property by the commissioners.
Can I see that?
It is a service agreement that I got from our purchasing, uh, Cherry.
Just going to have a quick, take a quick hand at it.
So you want these done individually, or are these?
Well, the next one's the next one on the item. I just gave her that already.
Okay.
Let me see. The one you're asking about right now.
So Cherry, this is just our form. Okay, good. Okay, great, okay. I, I've not seen this exact one, but if it's our, it's our form, it appears to be, then I'm, I'm fine with it.
It's the exa, I mean, that's what I was told to hand.
All right. Are we going to do them separate or together?
Together.
So next.
The next one is for Daveville On-Site Services. This is a service agreement to put emergency lighting on our new disaster response trailer. Uh, you can't be pulling a big trailer like that without having any kind of emergency lights if we're going through intersections or anything like that, and that is just to have his company do that for us.
We can talk about my questions later, so.
Okay.
Do you want your questions answered before approval?
No, it, it has no bearing on, on whether we approve or not.
Make a motion to ratify both agreements.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi.
Yes.
Sarah Seaton.
Yes.
Thank you, Matt.
Do we need to vote for the, to put the park, should we be doing that with, uh, Table Rock to place the sign on Friedman?
That's what I was confused about.
We just.
Gotcha.
Did them together, right?
I don't know, did we?
Well, yeah, we did.
I thought we were just ratified. That's, it says ratified a sort of service agreement.
Right, we just, we just did, we just voted on them both.
Okay.
So we'll see you again in a minute.
All right.
Okay, next item is contract with Purple Ink. Purple Ink is a human resource, uh, company. We have met, uh, with the owner of the company the past week, Jody, and she has done a proposal that was by consensus vote of the commissioners to do two things, an HR assessment, um, that will cost up to $5,500 to do that, to go through and interview stakeholders, do analysis and recommendations. And then HR outsourcing would be the second part. Uh, that's up to $20,000 right now, and that would be allowing, uh, onsite HR for 24 hours a week. That would be, uh, coming actually here and helping train myself and Liz.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi.
Yes.
Sarah Seaton.
Any discussion for the, for the public at all about this?
Discussions regarding Purple Ink?
Yeah, just any more explanation than just that.
Oh, I thought it was, when we sat down with her, she explained what she would offer and to have, um, someone that already has experience to come in and train Debbie and Liz how to manage the HR role more effectively. Sounded perfect. Because with all the troubles that we've had since January, um, I think it would be refreshing to have, um, a solid foundation and to be up to, um, protocol procedures, to have those things in place correctly, starting now, so that moving forward in the years to come, we would have, you know, that solid ground of this is how you do things, this is the right way, and not, not have all of the, um, I don't want to say upheaval, but, um, you guys know what I mean.
Yeah, and that, that's what I was wanting, Stacy, is just a little bit more explanation for, um, people that might have questions that are here tonight.
It's not only going to benefit, it's not only going to benefit HR, but it's going to benefit the county as a whole. You know, I know there's been some frustrations with, um, other offices, and I think that this will really help, um, take that frustration away and give us just that good footing that we need.
I agree, and I think the assessment is the, the, the most important first step to identify areas of, um, concern that we need to remedy quickly, so, all right, that's all it was, it was just a little bit more.
Yeah, certainly because they're going to meet with, um, certain offices and find out strengths, weaknesses, you know, improvements, kind of pinpoint those things. I think that will be great.
Okay, and then also for just general public information, this isn't a decision that was made solely by the commissioners. We actually had the, the meeting with the owner of the company. Um, she came, explained what the services would be. We had the auditor there so he could express his needs, um, in this regard, as well as members of the county council, just so they could have an idea, um, because they do watch our budgets. Um, so, and all that were in, all that were in attendance, obviously, there, you know, it was just a, a few, agreed that this was a, a very necessary, um, service to employees. So with that, um, my vote is yes.
I think we already voted on it, didn't we?
I didn't. I asked her, I asked her on discussion first.
I'm sorry.
So I just wanted to throw a little bit more information to the public. So it didn't look like we were just saying, okay, let's do $25,000 for this.
I think we're on legal stand, but it's, it's a great move, too.
Yeah.
It's a much-needed issue, so.
Okay.
Okay, the next item, last item, basically, I'm just letting you know that I'm, I've asked, I'm asking council for additional appropriation, um, for two things out of the ARPA interest, which they took and put into the general fund, just so you have knowledge of it. Um, or you can tell me not to go, but I'm putting it into, uh, HR contract fees and legal fees, and we'll be going to the next council meeting to ask for that. Just wanted you to know.
Yeah, and I will be happy to go with you, as we told them that we would.
Okay.
To help, um, along the way here.
Thank you.
I'm just going to say on the record that I'm okay with the, the contract fees.
Yeah.
This will be in addition to what we're doing now, so that we can keep them much longer this year.
So, um, and I'm fine with both legal and contract, that's fine. Matt? You're up again.
He asked me to take it off the agenda, but he can tell you why.
I'm sorry, okay.
How you're feeling. Uh, Matt Gable, EMA Director. It is on there. It was for the restricted opioid funds, and that is, I was going to do a project to do thousand stop-the-bleed kits, and that's for each classroom in Warwick County. Um, but we, I've talked with the new health officer and the health administrator, and we're going to move, uh, with the Warwick County Health Department and team up and do that as a team for every classroom.
That's awesome. I'm glad the collaboration's already starting.
Yep.
Thanks.
Sherry Seaton is acquisition administrator. Uh, the first item on my agenda this evening is opening bids for the Highway Department, tandem axle trucks. On May 21st, we put out a, uh, invitation for bids issued on behalf of Warwick County Highway Department. Invitation seeks so bids for three new tandem trucks, each equipped with dump bodies, snowplows, salt, and, uh, sand spreaders. The first notice, uh, to, to the bidders was published in the newspaper May 29th and followed up with the second publication on June 5th. Invitations were sent to TLG Peterbilt Trucks out of Louisville, Kentucky, Sternberg Automotive Group out of Jasper, Indiana, and BOMAC Truck Sales out of Evansville, Indiana, as outlined in the invitation to bid. Each bidder is asked to provide a trade-in allowance for three 2006 Sterling trucks, three snowplows, and three sand salt spreaders. Uh, to demonstrate financial responsibility, each bidder is required to submit a bid bond in the amount of $10,000 along with their bids, as stated, um, and in accordance with IC 522-16-5, to facilitate, to facilitate the tallying of bids, I provided, um, everyone with a bid register, and you're not going to need a bid register, as we've only received one bid, so it'll be pretty simple. I'm pretty shocked on that, actually. Uh, the bid we are receiving today is from BOMAC Truck Sales, um, on Highway 57 in Evansville, and they're representative. In case we have any questions, Matt Brown is in the, uh, audience tonight. And his bid bond is present in the amount of $10,000. And it appears that non collusion equal employment, employment proposal. Okay, so the total bid, um, per vehicle is $267,000, 267,625 per vehicle, which would be a grand total of $802,865,000. The trade-in, if, uh, the county so desires to take the trade-in, would be a deduction of $30,000. Making the total bid amount, if you take the deduction, of $772,875. And if the commissioners decide to award this, this evening, I would ask that they allow, uh, Bobby and myself, or Steve and myself, the opportunity to go over the bid package to make sure all of the paperwork is in order.
That's what I was going to ask. Did Bobby give you any guidance before you left on this, or just do this thing?
Um, I'm aware of what he wants on it, but it may, it may be best to wait till he returns. Your vote, subject to his approval.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to go to the bid to the lowest bidder, only bidder, uh, subject to review by Sherry and Bobby.
Yes, I will second that motion.
Roll calls, uh, Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi.
Yes.
Sarah Seaton.
Yes.
Okay, just to be clear on that too, Commissioner Philippi, do we bring that up in the next meeting on the 14th, or just go off what Bobby says?
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Um, thank you for that, commissioners. The next item, uh, on my agenda this evening is painting bids for Linville EMS at the commissioners' meeting in December of 2024. We had, uh, awarded a painting contract to Linville EMS, to First Patriot Painting, and as you all know, we couldn't meet the COI requirements, therefore, I went out and got, um, five additional bids, and, uh, I received a bid from, uh, Tri-State Painting in the amount of $19,840. Sims Painting, $27,240. Brody's Painting, $19,250. Turpin's Painting, $11,950. And Mark Schmidt Construction, $17,796. Uh, I've attached a spreadsheet in your packets detailing, uh, the costs for the EMS project. The original quote that we accepted was $11,330. I recommend to the commissioners that we, uh, that you award to the lowest bid, $11,950 for Turpin's Painting, which will result in additional expenses of $620. That amount can be covered by the contingency funds, leaving us with a 5.3% remaining in the contingency fund.
That's a huge discrepancy in, huh, that's a huge discrepancy in bids.
Oh, yeah, I, I couldn't believe it. I don't believe Turpin's is a union company, so I think that's the difference. Um, Mark is not a union company, but, yeah, I don't know.
Make a motion to approve the lowest responsive bidder.
I'll second Terry's motion.
Roll call votes, Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi.
Yes.
Sarah Seaton.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, the next item. Thank you, commissioners. The next item on my agenda is SWAT Pest. SWAT Pest is our newly appointed county pest control contractor. He was not made aware that Skels Lake encompasses the shelter houses in one animal barn that also required pest treatment. That was not in my bid specs. It never has been in our bid specs. But during his onsite meeting, Ben had pointed it out, and it was, it had become clear that these additional structures also needed attention. So I do take full responsibility at that oversight.
So my question is, they were lowest, the other bidders, did they not include these buildings?
No, no. They were not. It was not included in the RFP. It was never included in any RFPs that we've done. So when they went out there, Ben walked through it. Ben didn't walk through it with the initial. And so it's going to be an additional cost to accommodate these of $75 per quarter, which is an additional annually of 300. And I would like to point out, it's important to note that even though it is an added expense of 300, SWAT Pest still remains 1,660 lower than the other two bids. I believe it's a fair price for both the county and for SWAT Pest. Today, I respectfully ask that the commissioners approve the annual increase of 300 for Skels Lake Pest Control, raising the fee from $100 per quarter to $175 per quarter.
So Terry, I think you're kind of alluding to, one, this is a services contract, so technically it doesn't have to go through that process.
I didn't want to be in a
No, you're right.
Situation where we say, oh, now we know what other bids.
No, you're absolutely right on that. So number one, we're covered there. Number two, it's similar to a change order, and so as long as it doesn't exceed that 10% threshold, this doesn't come close to. So I think on two fronts, we're fine with going this route. If it would have doubled the cost, then I agree with you. We should backtrack a little bit. Yep.
Motion to approve.
I second the motion.
Roll call votes, Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi.
Yes.
Sarah Seaton.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item on my agenda is approval and ratification of Patriot Engineering for the Ward Security Center Erosion Control Evaluation and Stormwater Pollution Protection Plan. Last August, it was identified that RQAW specifications stipulate that the owner bears responsibility for engaging in qualified professionals to evaluate erosion control measures at the Ward Security Center project. Following each one-half-inch rainfall, the self-monitoring practice not only addresses erosion control, but also contributes to effective stormwater pollution management. In light of recent heavy rainfalls, it's become imperative to promptly address the erosion that has occurred. Patriot Engineering is well-equipped to provide these services, including soil, concrete, and structure testing that they are already currently providing. Their work has been conducted on a time and materials basis. We have reached the limit of their original purchase order amounting to $66,225. They have submitted a change order request to incorporate investigation related to Stormwater Pollution Protection Plan with requested additional amount of up to, but not to exceed, $25,000 to support this ongoing work. The owner's representative, Project Partners, has allocated this amount within the owner's soft cost budget under a third-party in testing and inspection services. From a procurement standpoint, the process for securing these professional services was conducted in accordance with IC 516-11-5. Bill Nix is here today with Project Partners. In the event you have any questions on this.
Got a question. I think it's for Steve. This is in the city of Boonville. Who approves it?
Yeah, it's not in our MS4 jurisdictions. It's within the city of Boonville limits, so I have no authority.
Where's, so Bill, where's the requirement coming from?
I would say probably from Ronnie Bane's inspection reports with IDEM.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, Steve's cracked this through IDM on Bane. And we haven't really heard a whole lot of news since January, but we still are doing weekly inspections and after half inch review. Let me add, too, that also
Bill, can you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, Bill Nix, Project Partnerships, owner's rep on the project. Also, and I think Sherry alluded to it, Patriot has done quite a bit more besides just erosion control. They've done soil testing, they're still doing concrete slant testing, air and frame testing. So this covers, this purchase cover covers all that amount. So, but this falls under the jurisdiction of the state and not city or county.
Correct. IDEM requires weekly reports, and any storm event exceeds half inch or more has to have an inspection and another set of paperwork performed.
If anybody likes to see those reports, you can stop by the job site every Friday afternoon on the web.
Exciting.
It is a requirement, so.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, guys.
I have a question for Cliff. This is more than 20%. Does that matter?
It does. Was this a, does it fall under the unforeseen conditions by any chance, or do you know?
We actually, we actually view that as part of the RQAW's contract, or obliged to abide by their contract. So I don't know that that necessarily falls within the realm of spending based on that, based on that information. Does that make sense?
It does not. So this is a public works project.
Right.
So this was bid out, correct, the scope of work, or no?
No, it was.
Doesn't have to hold professional services.
So this is professional services?
It's not bricks and mortar.
Okay, okay. Was this service bid out with a proposal submitted to anybody, or four proposals, do you know?
Not at the beginning of the general.
Then I don't have an issue with that, then.
No, it was strictly
Professional services.
Professional services.
Terry made a motion to approve the change order. Stacy's?
I'm here.
Okay. Terry made a motion.
Okay, I will second the motion.
Roll call vote, Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi.
Yes.
Sarah Seaton.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item on my agenda is approval and ratification of business environments. This is for chairs for the security desk staff at the Judicial Center. Tony Tedesco reached out to me several months ago, highlighted a vital opportunity for improving the work conditions of his dedicated team. Currently, the Security Center is using chairs that have been passed down from the auditor's office. These outdated chairs do not adequately meet the essential needs. The chairs have insufficient padding resulting in discomfort during prolonged use. The poorly designed armrests pose further challenges for staffing, trying to sit comfortably while wearing their duty belts, which does include a firearm, and other necessary equipment. As a result, they often find themselves shifting in and out of their seats. The situation leads to unnecessary physical discomfort during shifts, and is crucial to consider the potential safety implications in the event of an emergency situation where every moment counts. By investing in your chairs, we can provide more support and functional work, environmental for the security team. The proposed RFM chairs are wider and come with a lifetime warranty on the cylinder and 12-year warranty on all other parts. The Apollo II chair that Misty Waters would be standing in offers a five-year warranty on all components except upholstery and foam, which are two years. This upgrade would significantly enhance the staff's comfort, efficiency, and ultimately benefiting their essential work. I do have three proposals. Business environment came in at $4,094.52. Office everything came in at $4,942. And BiWorks chairs came in at $4,609. I did speak with Debbie Bennett Stiersman to determine the source of funding. She reported that it can be deducted from other services. I respectfully ask the commissioners to consider approving the low bid from business environments in the amount of $4,094.52 to purchase chairs for our law enforcement staff at the Judicial Center.
Yeah, let me get to the point where they don't
Is this my responsibility, or is the sheriff's department?
It would be real nice.
Is this a commissioner purchase or a sheriff's purchase, Chief Cruz?
Gotcha. I don't know.
It's not a great amount of money. I just, I mean, I understand that you guys are responsible for staffing.
Right.
But I don't know who's responsible for, there's not a whole lot of equipment there.
No, there's not. Again, this is news to me. The other equipment that's at the security desk is provided by the commissioners, actually a machine and
I think so.
Yeah, metal detector and everything else. So I would assume it would fall in your
Follows a line logic, at least, right?
I think so. Just out of my curiosity, what's the difference between the Evolve and the Apollo II, and why are we getting seven and one?
The Apollo II sits higher because Misty has to sit higher at her desk.
Okay.
And the other ones are just a wider base, so everybody that has firearms, they're not getting stuck on the armrest.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
I make a motion to approve the lowest responsive bidder.
I will second the motion.
Roll call votes, Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi.
Yes.
Sarah Seaton.
Yes, and I'll be glad when we don't have to vote on office chairs.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, commissioners. The next three items are declaration of surplus items. Auditor has an old printer, 23 years old. It's performed its useful life. I am just requesting the commissioners declare this item as surplus and deem it worthless. I'm just doing it in a public meeting, so we have record of it.
You can do them all three together.
Yeah, okay. The next one is, oh, the poor corner. My goodness. Stacy's got a picture, and I'm just even embarrassed that this is what we've had to use as Ward County. This cot, this removal cot, wanting to get it declared surplus. And that's sad. It's so sad. Thank you to Kayler's Funeral Home. They provided us with a brand-new one. This is held together with duct tape, and it's a shame. So I'm asking to declare that as worthless surplus. And last but not least, the surveyor's office has some transits and levels that are still in good shape. They never use. Dentists would like these to be put on gov deals, so that will not be worthless surplus. It will be put on gov deals for sale. And you have pictures of all of those in your packets.
Motion to declare the items reviewed by Sherry as all surplus.
Second.
Roll call, Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi.
Yes.
Sarah Seaton.
Yes, I do have a question, though, and you may not know it. I may have to ask Melissa. But at the end of last year, there was a new cot ordered, but we have two vehicles.
Okay.
So I'm assuming now we have new ones in each.
I'm hoping. This is the one, I guess, since Kayler's purchased a new one, this is the one she's going to get rid of. But I'm assuming, the way I understood it from Melissa, this wasn't used until Kayler's
Oh, absolutely, it was, yeah.
Was kind enough to purchase one for us.
So, so we should have two new ones.
No.
One for each vehicle, okay.
One question, if I may, for Sherry regarding the trucks. Is Mr. Matt Brown still in the audience?
He is.
Is there an anticipated delivery date once the authorization is to proceed with the order?
Matt, could you come up here, please?
Maybe in terms of months instead of weeks.
Matt Brown with BOMAC Truck Sales out of Evansville, Indiana. As far as our order board with Mack trucks, right now, we are currently in October, November timeframe as far as a chassis order. The bodybuilders, as far as the dump bodies, the plows, the spreaders, those are the guys that are actually on a long lead time, according to Meyer Equipment, who I also bid with in this packet. My projected completion of the total truck is approximately May of 2026.
I thought it was going to be somewhere around a year. That's what our stormwater truck was projected, so it'd be similar. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll let Bobby know.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
The next item, the surveyor asked me to put on the agenda, but I don't see him, so I guess I'll take it off.
Sounds good.
Thank you. First item I have on the agenda was to approve the paving list for 2025. You have your local road list in front of you. Bobby, I believe, sent this to you in the draft form.
It's in your packet.
There's a total of 34 roadways. The local budgeted amount is 2.555 million. This does not include the $3 million we were awarded for the community crossing municipal grant funds previously earlier this year. Any questions he asked, if I can answer for him?
I don't have any questions. I call him every day and get those answered.
Well, we're a little late this year because the paving contractor was late in getting the quotations for us.
Yeah, you did?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the paving lists for 2025.
Second.
Roll call vote, Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi.
Yes.
Sarah Seaton.
Yes.
And the last item I have is the encroachment agreement from CenterPoint Energy. Bobby did report to me that he met with Andrew Skinner, and Andrew is good with the latest changes. And I have a copy of the encroachment agreement for your approval and signature this evening. This is with CenterPoint Energy on the roundabout that we're getting ready to prepare the bid at Old Grove and Anderson Road.
There are actually two agreements.
Two encroachment agreements?
Both with CenterPoint, yes.
Who's the second one?
They're both in your packet, yeah. The only difference is the diagrams.
Should be in your packet, but I have two originals here for your same
There's just a different area.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve both encroachment agreements.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi.
Yes.
Sarah Seaton.
Yes, you've stumbled over that.
Thank you. That's all the business I have that Bobby requested for this evening.
Thanks, Terry.
Paul Cruz, Chief Deputy Sheriff. Do you already have this in front of you? Sorry to be aware of it. Just a request to declare handgun surplus for retired deputy.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote, Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi.
Yes.
Sarah Seaton.
Yes.
Because they're all going to be retired.
Thanks, I know.
I've got the original on each side.
Nothing for me.
I do have a sign-in sheet, but I'm not sure if they want to talk. Julia Harris, did you want to speak, or you just signed?
My name is Julia Harris. I used to reside at 217 Top Third, the building. And I have to say, and I just really wanted to give a huge shout-out, because first 30 days was extremely dark for me. The only person that's ever, ever, ever reached out to me, and I love Boonville, was Matt from EMA. And I can't thank him enough. He is actually, there's no places to rent here in Boonville, especially for affordable places, you know, and safe places, you know. You just got to really be careful with that. We just happened to find a place that a gentleman had purchased, and somebody had vacated after 17 years. It needed some work. We, I did ask for help, you know, to help this gentleman. I mean, he's a young guy that purchased this property, and, you know, it was pretty much denied. Matt stepped up to the plate, and him and his team, and this little bitty guy, cute as all get out, they're in there, they're just painting away and everything, so that I could finally have a home to go to again. What?
I asked if that was him, the little
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it was a joke.
That would be somebody here. Because he, how is your property, by the way?
It's, I haven't heard a thing in two months.
Same here. It's, it's, I did purchase a drone. Same here. Uh, it's, 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 I did purchase a drone, but I can't tell you guys enough. Just somebody reaching out to you when I was probably the one that was the most devastated from this whole situation. Uh, everything I own is in there. I did purchase a drone and, uh, my friend's husband is really good at it. So there's a blind that's open like this much. He got that drone right at it. It's kind of eerie, but it looks like I just got out of my bed. So I know there's a portion of that back building that I think we could get in. Hear me out. There's only three things I want out of there. I want two tubs of pictures and a hard drive from my son that is no longer with us, and they are in that back. If there was some way, is anybody trying to figure out? I almost would raise up that window because I know it's not locked, because I never lock the windows.
Don't say that out loud.
I would almost open it up and let her, and fly the drone in there. But I have nothing for him. So if you guys ever find out what is going on with, uh, Third Street, where are we at? What are we doing? But you got to give this Matt guy, I mean, he even told me through the darkest days of that 30 days, if you want to just come up here and you want to sit down and have a cup of coffee, I'd love to do that with you. He's the only one.
He's a good guy.
He is a really good guy.
Thank you so much.
He's extraordinary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it? Is it? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Second. Two I already seconded.
Stacy Franz.
Yes.
Terry Philippi.
Yes.
Sarah Seaton.
Yes.
Roll call is.
Thanks, Steve.
Uh, thank you. It's Cliff.